Good, I'd like to call it order. The workshop meeting for January 17th, 2024. We'll start off with public comment. And we'll start off with Mr. Becker, please.
I'm actually here for the street vacation petition. I'd be happy to present, but if you would rather wait until that point in the agenda?
That's fine.
Whatever your preference is.
That's fine.
You want to go now?
No, we're all right.
Okay.
About Keith Fortner?
Yep. Same thing here.
Mr. Holt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Name and address, four, please.
Yes, sir. Robert Holt, PO Box 1131, Hanover. I live in the Third Ward.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I was able to attend the Library Board of Governors meeting this month and heard the discussion. It's a difficult meeting to attend because they hold it in the middle of the day. And I heard some interesting things, but I'm going to just ask the Borough Council to do one thing, and that's keep your promise that was made back in June of this year, to end the current situation with the library and the financing, and to make the library self-sustainable in 2025, 2027, to stop it. You voted twice to do that in June, and I am going to ask you to keep that promise and remember that promise. And then you compounded it with a tax increase that raised every tax and fee on the borough residents. Meanwhile, they're sinking under a $1.6 million cost of operating the library. And, Mr. Chairman, unusually, I wouldn't do this, but I'm going to reserve my opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting when there's more public comment.
Yes, sir.
And I thank you all for your time.
Yep. Okay, community media, if you want to see if anyone's online.
Those joined in on the Zoom may unmute yourself if you'd like to address council.
Okay, not seeing any. We'll move to number two, which is the solicitor.
Borough Council had an executive session this evening from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM involving the following items: KC Construction versus the Borough of Hanover, and three matters relating to the lease and purchase of real estate under Section 708A, 3, 4, and 5 of the Sunshine Act.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to number three on the agenda, which will be presentations. Sarah.
Good evening. I'm Gary Laird, President of the Hanover Chamber. This is Sarah Messer, Vice President of the Hanover Chamber. And first, thank you for having us this evening. We appreciate, we know you're busy. We wanted to give you sort of an update on one of our signature events that is also has been incredibly meaningful for Hanover for many, many years. And that was the rebrand of the Hanover Dutch Festival to the Snack Town Street Fair. And we're going into year four, three?
Yes, this will be year four.
Year four of the Street Fair. And we rebranded it a few years back based on feedback that we got from vendors, feedback that we got from the community as it relates to, you know, the need to perhaps look at a different, you know, change up in terms of entertainment, the types of vendors that we invited in. And so we did that. We just wanted to share some of the results that we've seen over the last two or three years and the feedback that we've received as well from vendors and attendees. The Dutch Festival was a great event for many, many years, but reached a point, pre-COVID, we're just kind of plateaued in terms of attendance. And, you know, July is, we often got feedback that there's nothing really Dutch or German about it anymore, and the entertainment was, you know, year over year, the same entertainment. And so we think people became or were looking for something a little bit different. And that's what drove us to really rebrand the event. So Sarah's going to share with you some of the numbers, and she gave you those, a handout with a sheet that has some of the statistics on it, but I'll let her kind of walk through that with you.
Yes, and thank you, as Gary said, for your time this evening. I'm pleased to share this data with you. I will not go through all of the numbers, but the one that really stands out is that number at the bottom, 12,000 attendees in 2023. That is a good number from a company called Pleaser AI that we work with, and they were able to provide that data based on cellphone ping. So not just the area code that is associated with that cellphone, but actual new numbers coming into the Street Fair area that we shut down compared to the year prior. It was just around 9,000, so we saw a big increase. And then in 2021, our rough estimate was probably around 7,000. So we've seen a large increase in the number of attendees who are joining us. They're coming from Westminster, Frederick, of course, out to Lancaster, Schipensburg, Chambersburg area, and even beyond that. So it is drawing a large group of people. Additionally, another number would be the six states that are represented from various vendors. Those vendors include specialty foods, arts and crafts, like you had been used to at the Dutch Festival, but clothing. We've also opened it up to local businesses and beyond, and that we've heard wonderful feedback about regarding the community engagement opportunity as well as recruitment tool for maybe new employers or employees. And we've just been really happy and had a very positive response. We continue to grow and will be adding additional entertainment. We also have a large kids' zone that we have had positive feedback about as well. So we were just really excited to share these numbers and wanted to thank you all for the resources that you provide to help us put that event on. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the data or the numbers that we've shared tonight.
Anybody on council have any questions for them?
Complimentary of the increases, but can you speak more outside of your event? Are these trends that post-COVID people are getting, let's just say they lost two years and now they're out doing more? Is this something we can capitalize other events potentially, are you thinking?
We are actually hoping to do that, and that's a wonderful lead into the, what you might be familiar with Snack Town Brew Fest.
Yep.
The sixth annual Brew Fest was held this year. Would have been seven, but we did cancel in 2020. But that event has, it kind of plateaued as well, and it was, we saw an opportunity based on these numbers to create a more inclusive event that will be open to families, not limited to 21 up. So while there will still be some beer available for purchase, it will be largely entertainment. There will be kids' activities involved. We will be bringing some additional vendors in. The nature of the event on the actual date, that second Saturday, third Saturday in September, excuse me, will stay the same. It's still a five-hour event. We still anticipate holding it at Mountfield, and we look forward to announcing a really exciting partnership that will bring additional outside attendees into that event as well.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Any other questions?
I would just like, I would just like to take the opportunity to thank Gary. I understand Gary is moving to the retirement fields, and I just, you have done amazing things for our community, and I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very nice.
We all do.
Okay, thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to 3B, which would be the Library Board of Governors.
Christina Rosenstiel, President of the Board of Governors.
Nathaniel Thistle, Vice President of the Board of Governors and Borough Resident at 311 DeGuy Avenue.
Thank you.
Do I need to say my address?
No.
Okay. We're here to make recommendations on behalf of the Board of Governors in light of the tabling of the lease. So the recommendations from the board are, one, to have orphan court approval for any tenant moving into the building; two, to maintain in our current state and have the HPLA and fundraising make up the difference of the general fund so the borough doesn't support the deficit; and three, that the reduction of our footprint from a tenant thwarts the mission of the library, which is to be a welcoming environment representing education, recreation, and progress, forming a cultural connection that joins people through text, technology, and meeting space. I also just wanted to put on record, we've had some unsolicited people reach out to us, so I just want to state that the Council/Library Work Group is the Borough Council's Library Work Group. The library is not part of that decision-making for this plan, one, and we were not involved in negotiating the lease that's happening with this tenant. So I just wanted to be sure that that was clear and on record. And I think that is our formal recommendations that were requested from last month.
And I would just tag on to elaborate a little bit of what Chrissy had said. You know, our concern with, you know, having any lease arrangement approved by the Orphans Court is that the, you know, the deed to the library, while I'm not an attorney, you know, we have, you know, just questions about that because it's deed restrictions and that it has to be, the property is to be used as a public library. And does the occupancy of the Historical Society as a tenant, does that meet that definition? Would we be in violation of our deed restriction with that? And this, you know, the building map here that shows the space that the Historical Society would occupy, this was not shared with the Board of Governors until our last meeting a week ago, last Thursday. We had no involvement in this whatsoever. And, you know, to move forward, it would, we have not had the opportunity to actively engage with members of the borough to come up with a plan that suits the needs of the library and the potential needs of the Historical Society if that arrangement can be put forth. It is, in our view, being done very hastily and without any consideration for public input at this point. I mean, we've received just a handful in the short period of time that the news is starting to get out through the community, and, you know, the general flavor of this is, you know, that the public voice should be heard and have some input into this rather than, you know, being dictated to, especially the Board of Governors, being dictated to relative to that, to this lease arrangement. And, you know, finally, I would just add as well that, you know, the borough's own code has about the Library Governing Board and states that the use and maintenance of said public library, the borough authorities shall adopt the recommendations provided such recommendations are as such as can be legally adopted of a Library Governing Board. And to this point, you know, we have not made a recommendation on this, you know, cohabitation, if you will, of the two organizations because we haven't had time to engage in that and propose a solution. So we're just asking that a decision not be made until all of us can sit together and put that recommendation forward.
Okay, any questions from council? We appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Moving on to number four, which will be looking for a motion for the consent agenda, which we had emailed to us, or if there's any questions or comments on the consent agenda before someone makes a motion.
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Second, oh, you second, Bill.
Me, too.
Thank you. Motion on the floor. No discussion. Okay. All those in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Passes. Should we go on to number five? Let's turn this over to the solicitor to do the introduction.
Okay, thank you. Borough Council received a petition to vacate an alley or a portion of an alley between 105 Allegheny Avenue and 119-121 Allegheny Avenue. I believe Mr. Becker is here tonight and will formally present the petition for vacation. But before he does that, I just want to advise council what this is really about. So the borough code provides that upon petition of an abutting property owner, a property owner can ask the borough to vacate an alleyway or a portion of an alleyway, which means essentially that the borough would then lose its public rights to it. So if it's a full alleyway, the borough would lose the alley. If it's a portion, it's just a portion. There's a certain legal process that has to go once we receive a petition, and the first is that the Borough Council hold a hearing. So tonight, part of the motion is to, or could be, to proceed with the legal requirements, which would be to schedule a hearing on the petition. And I would suggest if we're going to do that, we would do it at the February 21st meeting. At that point, the petitioners would have the burden of moving forward, showing how the vacation is in the best interests of the borough. That hearing has to be advertised, and following the hearing, the borough then makes a decision, much like in our conditional use hearings, either to approve or deny the petition to vacate. If it approves it, it can certainly set conditions, but in order to approve it, it must also enact an ordinance. So part and parcel of that approval would be authority to advertise an ordinance and adopt it at a future date. So with that said, council, have any questions about the vacation process?
What was the address again?
It is 105 Allegheny Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
And 119/121 Allegheny. It's the alleyway between the two properties.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, what would happen if a crime happened in the alleyway? Like, who would be responsible for that?
After it's vacated?
Yeah.
Well, it would be on private property at that point. So it'd just be like it was in someone else's property. It wouldn't be on a public road.
It could still be a liability.
Margie, if I can just ask you, do you want to tell them what AJ said at our meeting about this alley that he was, elaborate on that at all?
Yeah, certainly. AJ's not here, I'm sorry. We don't use the alleyway now. In fact, those two neighbors are using the alley, and the borough will, you know, will do a hearing.
Right.
Which will bring out all of these facts, but, you know, we don't have an issue with it currently.
Right.
As staff, I can speak to.
Thank you.
That's the alley that goes back towards the park, right? It's that tiny, that tiny little alley that goes through, okay? Because my mom lived there, and I just, kind of exactly the alley you're talking about. Okay?
But to be clear, what's being proposed in the petition is not to vacate the entire alleyway, just either side of the alley. So the alleyway will continue to be, even if Borough Council approves the petition.
Got it.
It'll just be narrower.
Right. Okay, I got it.
Okay, well, Mr. Becker, would you like to step up to the microphone?
Sure. Art Becker, I represent Ryan Bell and Dr. Michelle Darianeri. In December, we provided to Eric Maines a signed petition to vacate the alley and the right-of-way vacation plans and a title search showing there are no utility easements or any easements found in the alley that's known as Bellevue Street. I'm assuming at this point, everyone knows the area that I'm talking about. You have the playground, the Elm Avenue Playground, there's an alley that runs the length of the one side, and then there's another 20-foot-wide alley that connects Eichelberger Street on one side and, I'm sorry, Allegheny Avenue and the playground. It's the Bellevue Street. It's 60 feet wide, it's 130 feet long, it's partially paved, it's in need of repair. And what we're asking the borough to do is, number one, retain the center 20 feet as an alley, and that part is already partially paved. There's 20 more feet on the one side that we would ask that would be deeded in favor of Ryan Bell, my client, and his wife, Dr. Darianeri, and then vacate the other 20 feet on the other side to the other property owners, Josh Clunk and Courtney Clunk. And, you know, the area that's partially paved is about 20 feet wide, and on the other, on the one side, it's grass, and the other side's grass. So essentially, what we're doing is asking the borough to vacate the 20 feet of grass on each side of what is already, if you look at it visually, looks like the alley. But the borough would maintain the center 20 feet as the alley. So we would reimburse the borough for costs to process the petition. We would indemnify the borough from and against any and all claims for damages or lack of access resulting from the vacation petition, and provide substitute easements as requested by the borough.
Anybody have any questions?
The only question I have is, I'm listening to Mr. Becker. In setting up a hearing for this, would we have any problems with emergency vehicles going down that 20 feet? You understand what I mean, like big fire trucks and stuff, and we have a fire that we have to, and they would, you know, bring in emergency vehicles?
Absolutely.
Fair question.
Would we have a problem with that, just that 20 feet?
As I understand it, I know Eric's not here tonight, I don't want to speak for him, but I believe that that was already considered, but certainly I will follow up with him to make sure if it wasn't specifically discussed with Chief Klausert that we will have it addressed at the time of what we present, if you'll permit us to proceed. But it's my understanding that that would be wide enough for the necessary emergency equipment to get in there, but I will verify that. I thought that was something that was already discussed, but I'll make sure that that's specifically addressed as we move forward.
Well, Eric's a Star Trek fan, so he just beamed in, so he's right there.
AJ's not here, but Eric is.
So he's sitting in the back. Eric's in the back.
Oh, sorry. He's hiding.
Do you want to speak to that area?
Now, I think if council does decide to move forward, the hearing, these are the various sorts of things that would come out in the hearing.
Right.
That they would present that sort of burden to prove to you. The off-the-cuff answer is no, I don't think there is an issue with it. A 20-foot wide is certainly comparable to other alleys we have in the borough. There's plenty of screen room all over the streets to get in there, and I think at the hearing, they would present additional information to solidify that.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I didn't see you back there.
Okay, so I'll be looking for a motion to approve to proceed with the legal requirements.
Question.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Solicitor, should we have the Clunks weigh in on this?
They have signed the petition.
Okay.
Which is something that we would have required. So they did.
What do you guys want to use the property for, the 20 feet?
My wife and I want to extend the fence that's currently on the property, and we're going to be able to park our RV that we have at the property inside the fence line.
Gotcha.
Basically, just make our yard a little bigger than what it currently is.
Okay.
On our side, and then the Clunks will do the same on their side as well.
And I can speak to the Clunks. I've spoken with them. They are in agreement as long as it doesn't cost them anything. And we said, that's fine, it won't cost you anything. They are in agreement with this.
Okay.
We'll raise the taxes when we make.
I'll be looking for a motion for that to proceed.
I'll make a motion, second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, finance, personnel, and administration. We had, all the, most, all this stuff was emailed to us, so we'll be looking for a motion for A.
I'll make the motion. Unless there's any discussion required, sorry. We tried to, Margie had requested, you know, if anyone had specific things they wanted to do, and then sometimes you get things you might not have an interest in, but look at it as your growth as a counselor, if you got one of those assignments, but.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those.
Wait a minute. Yeah. The only thing, Bill, I was assigned to another committee, that sometimes is going to inflict itself on my Gabriel project.
Okay.
So as long as it's understood that there'll be times when I cannot attend.
Or get with, get with someone's, Margie or Dory, and maybe we can change, if we have enough notice, we can change meeting dates.
I'm sorry, we can what?
Change the meeting. We can potentially change dates if, with enough notice.
Yeah, the Wednesdays are bad. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for your understanding.
We got a motion on the floor, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Moving on to 6B, which was emailed to us, too. Council goals, we'll be looking for a, any discussion, I guess, first on this.
I like to discuss one or two things.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we approving the fact that it's wonderful that we have goals, or are we approving the specific goals that are written?
The goals.
The specific goals.
Specifics, yes, yes.
Well, then, then I would, I would ask that maybe we table under the Fire Commission number five, six, and seven. I'm concerned about those.
Sure.
I don't understand them.
Sure.
I don't know if we hashed that out now, or we do that at a Fire Commission meeting, or I don't know how that works.
Yeah, how do we do that?
Well, if you don't understand them right now, I'd say we just leave them off.
Leave them off.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Gain that understanding, however we discuss them going forward, then can put them back or modify them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Because I'm in agreement with Carol. Yeah. I must have been in Zombie Land when I was reading all of this, and I miss that.
Sure thing.
Okay, so I'm assuming, Carol, you want to make the motion to pull those three out?
I do.
And approve the rest of them. Can I get a second for that, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
There we go.
Miscellaneous fee resolution amendment? Before we get started here, any discussions on this? Once again, emailed to you.
Make a motion, approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 6D, SRBC, Consumption Use Grant. Any discussion on this before we get started with this one?
The only thing that, that I consulted with Eric tonight, correct?
Yeah.
Are we working? Okay, so we don't worry about the 10%. The only thing is the 25%, and that's the 25% matchable, correct?
Correct. The way the grant is set up is it's in two tiers, up to 100,000 is a 10% match, above 100,000 is a 25% match. This job is in excess of 100,000, so we're looking at the 25% of the project.
Thank you for making it clear to all of us, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6E, Hanover Area Historical Society approved the lease and use of the portion of the Guthrie Memorial Library. of the Guthrie Memorial Library, the Pennsylvania Room Collection.
Mr. Chairman.
I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. We'll be going into executive session here at?
7:30.
7:30 on the dot.